I'd like to call to order this workshop for the Borough of Gettysburg Council for Monday, April 28, 2025. I don't have any opening remarks tonight. I do have a couple of brief announcements here. An executive session of the Borough Council was conducted immediately following the adjournment of the April 14, 2025 Borough Council General Business Meeting, consistent with Section 708A1 and Section 708A5 of the Sunshine Act. The public is invited to participate in the second public forum to discuss design concepts for the Gettysburg Gateway Connectivity Project. That public forum will be convened at 6:30 PM in council chambers at the Gettysburg Borough Municipal Building, 59 East High Street, Gettysburg, Pennsylvania, on Wednesday, April 30, 2025. Last Wednesday, I would say approximately 25, 30 citizens came and participated in the process and spoke their minds as we tried to create a common vision for how we want to move forward with a major renovation project. So we really encourage as many people as possible to join us this coming Wednesday to share their thoughts and ideas as well. We do not have a special presentation tonight, so that's going to take us right into public comment. This first section is reserved... You're going to speak here? Okay. This first section is reserved for items appearing on tonight's agenda. Please limit yourself to five minutes. Kindly use the podium, and please state your name and address of residence.
I am Susan Nagel. I live at 650 Red Patch Avenue in the borough, and I'm here representing the Shade Tree Commission, because that's on your agenda for tonight, that and sidewalks. And David Rice, our chair, wasn't able to make the meeting tonight, so I'm here. If you have any questions or comments to make that I can take back to the commission, please feel free to do that. I did provide some information that Sarah had handed out to each of you leading up to this, and I just want to briefly explain what's in front of you. The first is from an article in the Washington Post that just appeared last week, and it discussed tree cover, tree canopy, in various cities across the country. And it gave you an opportunity to put in your city, which I did, and it did come up with a tree cover for Gettysburg, Pennsylvania, and I put that onto this. I took information out of that that I thought would be of interest to us locally. The second handout is something from... It's from the U.S. Forest Service. It's called iTreetools.org, and you can go in there and put in your municipality, whether it be a town or a city, and it will calculate your tree canopy cover. It will give you all kinds of information about how trees benefit you and your community. And I don't propose that I can speak to much of this about carbon sequestering and all that stuff, but this will give you a little information. And it compares you to other municipalities in the area, so you can see how we stack up with that. And the tree cover in Gettysburg, they have at 16.53 percent. So there is a wide variation between how this was calculated in both of these. And the last one on the back, this is how iTrees can be... The tool can be used also. This is a tree in Media, Pennsylvania, and I took a photograph of this sign that was roped to the tree. And you can see, it's quite a large tree. It's a London plane tree. We have some of those in the borough. It's over four feet in diameter. It's on a residential street in Media. And they have used i-tools to calculate how this tree is helping the community. So I thought it was very interesting if you want to go into i-trees and play around with that. The website is at the bottom of this photo. So if you have any questions, the commission does appreciate the funding we get from the council, and we hope to continue to work with you as you tackle sidewalks. And we'll have some ideas ourselves about some changes we might want to make to the shade tree regulations. So, thank you.
Thank you for that. That's some really fascinating stuff. I'm going to break the rules a little bit here and go backwards in the agenda, because I realized I forgot to make two announcements on behalf of Mrs. Butterfield and Mrs. English. We do have two recycling events coming up here in the month of May. We want people to be fully aware of. First is on Friday, May 16. We will have the paper shredding event. This is free for residents of Gettysburg, but if you live in a surrounding township or municipality, you can participate for $4 a box, and there's no limit on the number of boxes you can bring. Mrs. Butterfield does like to point out, however, this is largely to be considered like a file box, not, say, a refrigerator box. And then the next day, on the 17th, we also have the electronics recycling event, and this one is restricted to residents of the borough. Both of these events were asking for preregistration... Well, requiring preregistration for... Those registrations can be sent... Can be done via email to Deb English. So her address is DEnglish@gettysburgPA.gov. She can also be called here at the borough office, 717-334-1160, and she's at extension 238. So please, folks, let's keep these electronics that are full of harmful heavy metals out of our landfills, and please recycle them. And then we're happy to invite... Oh, shush. We're happy to invite folks from the larger community to participate in the paper shredding event. And Mr. Frankel, if you need those details at the end of the meeting, I'm happy to provide. In case you want to print that right on the front page or anything like that. All right. Thank you. All right. Was there any further public comment here? All right. We're going to move on into our current and old business. The first thing we're going to talk about tonight is sidewalk ordinance revisions as it pertains to the shade tree ordinance. I'm going to hand this over to Robbie and Charles.
So let me cover the... Something... There's really no policy considerations with this just yet. I just found it interesting. So in your policy briefing summary on page 10, item A, Sidewalk Repair Placement Program, I just found it interesting as we are progressing in the development of a new, more robust sidewalk ordinance and an amended or revised ordinance, we are... We're talking about the sidewalk repair program that we'd like to put in place that may include some financial incentives or inducements or help if property owners need it. We've always kind of struggled with the best way to communicate the need for repair of sidewalks to property owners. So I'm a property owner in a different municipality, State College, and they are going through something similar. I just wanted that this is a unique way, I think, that's something we should put on our radar. They sent property owners in about 25% of their borough that this year will be inspection year for sidewalks in one-fourth of the municipality. And it's just a simple postcard announcing that this is your time to be inspected, and if you have a sidewalk in need of repair, go to this QR code or the borough website, and it tells you their ordinances and processes and things that you need to know. And they said there'll be a distinct mark on a sidewalk in front of your property. So we don't need to discuss this tonight. It's more information that's become available to us as we are working through this process. Shade trees is an ongoing issue for us as well, and I'm happy Ms. Nagel is here, because I think the council would benefit from hearing more from her as it specifically relates to the tree commission's work. And I know they have a specific request of the borough council. So with that, I will turn it over to Public Works Director Harbaugh, who is the staff support for our Shade Tree Commission, and then perhaps Ms. Nagel can speak to the specific request of the Shade Tree Commission, and then council can deliberate. Robbie?
Good evening. So in February's minutes, the Chair, David Rice, proposed a planning project, and he also proposed a motion to be able to plant on private property, which is out of our right of ways. And that would be... The motion would be that the Shade Tree Commission would plant the tree at their expense, but from there on out, the maintenance would be the property owners, whether it would be trimming, taking it out if it dies. The maintenance would be on the property owner. I'm not sure the legality of this going on to private property. That would be a hairy question, but I foresee some issues going on to private property with our equipment to plant a tree. Utilities would be one. If the water line... Whenever one call comes in to mark out underground utilities, GMA marks from the curb stop out into the street where their water line is. I don't know... We don't know exactly where the residential line from the curb stop back into the property would be, but if we're in there with equipment and boring holes and happen to hit a water line, we'd be liable. Same way with gas line and sanitary sewer lines. GMA knows where the sanitary sewer line is attached to their main, but they have no idea how it is routed back to their property with sanitary sewer line, and if it's shallow or if it's deep, they don't know that. That's sort of the problem I see with the ordinance or the proposed motion for the change the ordinance for that. Any questions?
Yeah. I mean, I just want to be really clear here. Are we discussing... Is it being proposed? And Susan, feel free to opine here. Are we discussing simply the 10-foot right-of-way from the curb, or are we just... Are we discussing areas beyond that 10-foot right-of-way?
Areas beyond the right-of-way.
That is... Okay. What is the rationale for this?
The rationale for this is we have areas of the borough where the sidewalks will not accommodate trees. There's just not enough room. Maybe it's not wide enough. In the case of Hanover Street, the gas lines were replaced. They were put under the sidewalk, which prohibits doing any kind of cutting in that area to put in a tree well and plant a tree there. So it prevents us from actually establishing any kind of canopy over the sidewalks or the street in areas of the borough.
I'm sorry. Are you saying that the gas mains run laterally under the sidewalk?
I believe that's correct. Yeah.
That is correct. There's... Yes.
Okay.
So that prohibits us from looking at, you know, planting a tree there. And the example in the letter that we provided to council was a line of single-family dwellings, some of them maybe apartments, that run in the 500, 600 block of York Street, which is a gateway entry into the borough and could use some beautification efforts there. The north side of the sidewalk there is... The sidewalk is just too narrow to accommodate tree wells. And that's the side of the sidewalk that doesn't have any utility lines over it. So it would be great to have some trees there that weren't, you know, inhibited by utility lines either. So we came up with the idea of reaching out to property owners to see if they would be willing to have a tree planted in their... If they have yard space, as some of those houses do, they would be willing to have a tree planted. I think what we were thinking was at least five feet back in the yard, so that you'd get the benefits of the canopy, much like you get from the colleges, all their trees that they've planted in their area. So that was our thinking for that. We would provide, out of our budget, we would provide the tree, and there would have to be probably some kind of one call done in order to dig a hole to plant that tree. And then we would have an expectation that the property owner would take care of that tree, would maintain it. So that was our thinking. It was a way that we thought we could increase our canopy, beautify parts of the borough that maybe need some help, and that would be one way to do that.
So that's an interesting idea. There's a... I think there's some weird things to discuss, though. For example, we have many locations throughout the borough where Public Works will maintain trees that are on public property, where they intersect with the public rights of way. So branches that are over the road or in the road or impeding power lines, we will routinely trim those. So it's curious that we would say, yeah, we're going to put in a tree that has the potential to make all of those same incursions, but this... We're not going to be responsible for this one. But if it, you know, was 20 years old and planted on your property by, you know, a previous owner, then we will take responsibility. Robbie, do you have a strong opinion as to whether this is viable in the short term and the long term? Are there things you... This would excite you about? Are there things that you would think are problematic?
Well, one of the problematic ones is, and I don't know this 100% for sure, but I would imagine you'd have to get some kind of variance, and you'd have to get some kind of variance for each individual property owner when they do this. Now, if they... If the commission could talk the property owner into planting the tree, digging the hole, maintaining the tree, then we wouldn't have to get on private property, dig a hole, and plant the tree. It'd be done all on them, and if they were... Happened to hit their own water line, that would be on them.
Right. What if instead it was a reimbursement program through Shade Tree for, you know, specifically... Specifically identified areas will buy the tree if you, you know, plant it and maintain it?
Yeah, we can talk about that as a possibility. The other possibility would be for us to pay to have it planted, an outside contractor or the place that actually provides the tree, if they have a planning service. We could also include that in the fee from the Shade Tree Commission if they would consent to having that tree there or want it. I know Carlisle does a... They give away trees every year to residents of the borough, and I'll check with them to see how they do that as far as planning, because I'm not sure if they're just to be used as a street tree, as we define it, or if that person can plant it, you know, anywhere.
Do you or any of the commission members work with the Ag Center when they do the giveaway every year of...
Yeah. Yeah, I do.
Is that a program that could be tapped into by the municipality?
Well, I thought about that. You know, those trees are only probably maybe that high, maybe that high at the most. And that is a possibility, and those are free trees of the understanding that that may... That program may only last one more year.
I see.
Their trees were cut in half this year. So they are natives. They're all natives, so it would be a good idea, and we could explore that resource as well. Yeah. I will... I will... Just for some food for thought, I went back to the regulations, and the state code for the borough in shade trees, it's 2720, 2730. And under 27... Well, it says 30, but it says 2720. It's B, is planting, transplanting, or removal. And these are the regulations that came down from the state to govern how shade trees are handled within communities. In the case of us in the borough, the responsibility... The borough created a commission, and that responsibility was given over to the commission. So... But these are the governing regulations from the state, and it talks about the council may, with or without petition, require the planting and replanning of suitable shade trees along and upon the sides of the streets upon alignment and at points as may be designated by ordinance by the owners of the property abutting the street at the points designated. I'm not sure what that means, but it does seem to give you a little leeway with that. So I just point that out, because there are provisions in the state code that I think we need to look at as we look at revising our shade tree ordinance as well. So...
Conceptually, what happens is we get our authority from the borough code, the state statute. So we have to look at that, and our power to ordain or to regulate, we have to do that within the constraints of that. So there is some latitude in that language, and that's intended so that, I mean, a council would be able to look at that and define within those powers what it would intend on doing. Would this be a voluntary program?
Yes. Yes, it would be.
Because it also occurs to me that, I mean, if you treat a shade tree, you know, as like a borough facility, if you will, and I apologize for that term, but it also seems like if it was voluntary, that that would be something that we could enter into easement agreements with property owners that would allow for proper access for maintenance, et cetera, just like if we had other facilities that were outside of the public right-of-way. I mean, it just makes sense that you could probably do that.
What types of trees did you have in mind?
Well, the types of trees, we're... We are currently working on our list of shade trees that, you know, people can look at and decide what they want planted or what they prefer. The type of trees, we like to have a mix of natives, non-natives, a mix of trees. Generally, it depends a lot on the area where you're going to plant it. You know, do you have... If you have electric lines, electric utility lines, then you have to use smaller, maybe flowering trees. If you have the lower lines, you can get away with a bigger tree. If you have no lines, you can go to maples and those sorts of trees, London plains that get four feet wide, you know, those kind of things. So...
Do you know, as an estimate, how deep you need to plant them?
Well, Rob is more familiar with the planting. Now, the root systems are different on different trees, so you also have to consider that, whether, you know, some have a more vibrant taproot that goes straight down, while others will be... Tend to more lift the sidewalks, and we consider that as well whenever we plant.
Sure.
Patty?
I'm sorry. The reason I ask is because if there is ones that require less shallow planting, I don't know how deep are the lines you... That you're worried about?
Well, it depends on the size of the caliper of the tree. Usually, if it's a two-inch caliper, it's usually a good... We're going down a good two feet, and the ball root's probably a good 30 to 36 inches in diameter. So...
Is there a... How deep are the... Like, the water and the sewer lines usually set?
Well, here again, we're in Gettysburg, so that varies, really varies. Two-foot, some of them are a little less than that. Gas lines are especially a little less than that, maybe. So, and unless the property owner would know exactly where those lines are routed, I don't know if we'll get a correct answer on that.
We have some precedent for this type of tree planting in neighborhoods when East and West Broadway, the streets were torn up and repaved some years ago, and on West Broadway, they replaced the center, you know, islands. But on East Broadway, they had... The residents were given an option of planting trees between the curb and the sidewalk in that strip, and I would say probably 80% of the people decided that they would do that. The trees, they paid for the trees. The residents paid for the trees. But I think Boyers came out and did... Robbie, is that correct on that?
Correct.
Boyers came out and did all the planting and the feeding of the trees and all. I don't know what the maintenance will be, if any of those trees would die.
Well, we already went down that road. We replaced one that died. That would be a shade tree tree.
Okay. And I know that at the time, the Chair of the Shade Tree Commission was really working with the neighbors, because they were looking at having all the same type of tree, and he advised them not to do that in case there would be a blight or some sort of infestation that would not wipe out all the trees then, in fact. So...
Right, because we have lost whole species or are losing whole species. Right now, there's something out there affecting the oak trees.
Right.
So it's not clear how that's going to affect, you know, what we already have planted.
Right. And those trees came in, I think, like, maybe anywhere from three to five feet, you know, depending on what type of tree they were. But...
Yeah. Yeah. So this was set up to be a pilot project, so... Because we didn't know what the response would be from the public, whether we'd get anybody who was interested in actually participating in this. And so we are interested in any of the legalities that might have to come with this, depending on which direction we might go. So any guidance that the council can give us as you're talking about it, that would be appreciated.
Okay. Does anybody else have any specific thoughts or questions?
I think it's a good idea. I just think communication with the property owner, more than just... More than just a one call, I think, something in writing, a letter of understanding, something legal binding, that exactly laying out the parameters of what it is and what's going to be done, just to cover the borough's best interest.
All right. Well, I think this is a fascinating idea, but there are potential pitfalls, and we, you know, do try to be somewhat risk averse, right? So I would propose, and I want to hear if everybody thinks this is a good way to pursue this, you know, what if we asked Mr. Eastman here to kind of dig into what that easement agreement could potentially look like? And in the meantime, could we ask members of the public to, you know, contact your council members and say, you know, this is a great idea, this is a terrible idea? Or, yeah, I would really love help putting trees on my property if that was an arrangement that could be struck. Would anybody have a strong feeling about an approach like that?
I think that's good, but one other question is if they're responsible for maintenance as a property owner, looking on down the line, if the tree needs to be cut down, who's going to be responsible and pay for removing the trunk?
I think our thought, if I read what David had in the letter, is that the property owner would be responsible for any future maintenance or removal of the tree. So that would have to be... So, that would have to be understood in some kind of written way with the property owner from the very beginning. It was just a way to encourage, you know, more trees to be planted.
Oh, I think it's a great idea, but do you know how expensive it is to remove a trunk?
I, I do.
Okay, that's, that needs to be boiled out to people.
I do.
I think, I think it's a great idea, because I love trees.
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay, thank you.
Anyone else?
Since it's a voluntary program, I, I think it's worth looking into for sure.
Yeah. Any other inputs here?
Jen, you referred to Carlisle, did you say their trade, Shade Tree Commission had done something similar? Or you, you mentioned that earlier.
They have a program where they make so many trees available, I'd have to go back and look at my notes, every year. And people put in for them, or they have like a drawing. And I'm just not sure where those trees get planted, if they, the borough then comes out and plants them. In Carlisle, the, actually, the owner is much more responsible for street trees than here, in, in our borough.
And do they have a Shade Tree Commission in Carlisle?
They do have a commission, it comes under their parks and recreation.
I see, yeah, that's interesting. Yeah, just curious, thank you.
Do you have a ballpark figure of what it would, if someone went forward with it, what one tree would, would cost us as far as the project and the?
Trees can run from under a hundred dollars, probably close to a hundred, the size that we usually get, to maybe closer to two hundred dollars a tree, depending on the species of the tree. And we do, we do get nice-sized trees from our, the current vendor we've been using, so.
So, around a hundred or two hundred, Robbie's labor teams and so.
I think, I forget what that latest bill was, Rob, and we got like eighteen, twenty trees or something. It was under two thousand, I think, yeah, so.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, any other questions? That'd be great, if you can give us some feedback on the legal issues. Our next meeting of the commission isn't till August, so we have, we have time to consider.
Yeah, I have a question.
So, the property owner would have communication with the Shade Tree Commission, would there be a conversation?
And they would have input maybe on the type of tree, would they have a choice, or?
They could have a choice, we would make some recommendations, and we do reserve the right to decline to plant certain trees because they just wouldn't be a good fit for the site, so.
Okay.
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 All right, well, thanks, that's a, that's a lot to think about. And in the meantime, if there are members of the community watching this at home and you have thoughts on this, particularly interest in it, please do reach out to your elected officials and let us know your thoughts on that one. All right, thank you, Susan. Let's talk now about code enforcement ticketing with Mr. Whitmore.
Good evening. So, this was last discussed in February. Since that meeting, staffs made a few changes or suggested some recommendation, recommended changes to the quality of life proposed ordinance. As proposed currently, the sequence of events would change. Previously requested violation ticketing times had like a two-day window. This further extends it. In practice, the total ticket, ticketing length would be go from having a warning to having to a full-blown non-traffic citation over a period of a month. In that time period, seven days after the quality of life warning, a violation ticket would be issued. It's a twenty-five-dollar fine, of which, if there's a payment made within, I believe it's seven days, there is a discount available, creating a ten-dollar fine. Otherwise, it would then be another twenty-five-dollar fine, five days after that minimum. That's to say, could be further down the line. The reason we say that it's, it's put into this as a discretionary method because oftentimes, there will be quality of life instances or issues that cannot be rectified on even a five-day timeline. So, making sure that we're providing an individual who does have a quality of life violation an opportunity to actually fix the violation will go a long way in actually having to defend a ticket or defend a citation in court. Ultimately, the total fine amount, if someone were to disregard the tickets, would go to one hundred dollars. Once that has passed, the non-traffic citation comes into play, which has a fine fee of up to six hundred dollars at the discretion of the court. That's something where we're, we can make a recommendation, but it's going to be a judge that's actually deciding. We've also provided a recommendation to modify the guided walking towards provision of the quality of life ordinance as it relates to amplification of sound. This has been a complaint we've been getting from private property owners, individuals in the right-of-way. It's something that may, should probably be investigated by council as it is a licensed activity occurring within the borough. And so, I'd made a slight, a little short presentation just for this evening. As I noted, those changes for the walking tour and the fines. Generally, our quality of life ordinance would have the following categories of, I guess, issues, nuisances, talking permits and licenses relevancy, trash junk recycling related codes, environmental-related codes, animal-related code sections, property-related code sections, and snow, or the snow, it's, we have one special one for snow. As it relates to the permits and licenses, relevant code section, quite a lot of text here, but overall, it's generally, if we have a section of a code with our codified ordinances that require that an individual or a business have a permit or license to conduct activity, if they're doing so against the code section, this is where those quality of life ordinance sections come into play. The same goes for trash junk. One thing to keep in mind, we have hazardous materials, rubbish and garbage. There's a lot of different types of, I guess, methods to have garbage and rubbish thrown about, strewn about, and it's defined as such in the ordinance. Motor vehicles in particular is called out as a separate type of offense. Going ahead, then we have the environmental-related code sections, as involved of growing weeds, grass and plant growth, which is a hot topic now as we've gotten some rain and everything's growing. So, please, keep in mind that there is an eight-inch limit to those plantings that aren't either trees, shrubs, or other garden type of flowers or placement, so just be aware of that. Also, we have, let's see, outside placement of indoor appliances, furniture, the ownership of waste recyclables for illegal dumping. And then shrubs and bushes comes into those that are hanging into the, the right-of-way. Animal-related code sections, this is where we have cats and dogs. Basically, the nuisance of owners keeping cats is defined. It's one of those things where we probably would not get involved without some additional assistance. When it comes to allowing dogs at large, that's one of those things that's a little more easy to tackle. The, and once again, animal waste and noise, that's, those are generally going to be limited to nuisance complaints. Property-related code sections, we have defacement of property, so that's graffiti. So, that is a property maintenance code section, so it's something that is a little challenging as there, some individuals will, will claim ownership of it, not necessarily as graffiti, but more as paint. So, there are other provisions related to property maintenance code as it relates to chipping paint and things like that that can come into play. But often, when it is graffiti, it's going to be something that's complaint-driven from the property owner or the tenant. Improper display of numbering on buildings, that, that's just one that's related to EMS. Getting to snow, this is going to be a big topic, hopefully in six months, or a little further, in six, seven or eight months. In terms of snow and ice, this ordinance applies to owners, tenants, occupants, leases and licensees. Unless specified, all streets are to be cleared within twenty-four hours after the cessation of any fall of snow. The time begins at dawn, if the snow ends during the hours of darkness. Now, there are, are certain streets that are on a twelve-hour snowfall. Those are well-known, the emanating from Lincoln Square. That's, that concludes the general presentation. I guess what we're looking for tonight is just guidance on if we're moving in the right direction, if we can get this thing over the finish line.
All right, discussion.
I just, a comment, I'm, I'm really happy to see the, the change with the noise ordinance in terms of the tours, because I have gotten a number of complaints from residents in Ward One, not necessarily, and, and also other wards as well. People have called me to complain about that, the ghost tours, especially at night, using the amplification, so, thank you.
I'm glad you looked into it.
Yeah, I'd like to see some clarification on that, just so there's not any confusion. I'm looking at the guided walking tours, five-dash-three oh three Z seven, that I think Ms. Lawson was just discussing. Sound amplification, including but not limited to megaphones, bullhorn speaker systems, P A S S systems or similar devices. So, what I've been noticing downtown is a tour specifically at night with some type of microphone on the tour leader, with some type of amplification device that is also on said tour leader. And sometimes it's a separate device, maybe a Wi-Fi device, such as a speaker, or even a, I've, I've seen them before where it's a lantern that actually has an amplification on it, speaker on it. There, those are annoying downtown, especially when it's starting before dark, and there's some outdoor dining happening on, on the square, for example. There are devices, however, that these, I would encourage these, these tours to look into, which are earpiece devices for their guests that are actually on the tour. So, the, the leader is, has a speaker, and it's essentially a radio device, like a walkie-talkie almost, but it's a one-way, where you put the earpiece in, if you're the person on the tour, you have, have it around your neck, and you have an earpiece, and you follow along, and you hear everything that this person, the leader is saying on their microphone, but it's not amplified out into the air.
The Segway tours in town currently use that technology.
They're great, for indoor and outdoor tours, they're absolutely great. So, the people that are on the tour hear every single word that you're saying. But these that are amplified, especially as they get into night, I've even seen some right out here at night after a certain hour, and I feel like they're pretty loud, and residents may not like enjoying that inside, so. Thank you for putting that in there.
Would there be any concerns about safety if people are not focused on what's going on around them and listening to what's going on from their tour leader, and even now? Because I live in town, I don't go out after dark, because I can't even see them most of the time. So, I see this little light going, and then there's like people running behind them, crossing the streets. So, my concern would be safety.
Well, I think we already have safety concerns around these tours in the dark, you know. Chad Allen makes a great point, we can leave this office, you know, on a Monday night at, sometimes we're here till ten, and there will, last week, two weeks ago, there was, when we left, there was three tours out in front of this building simultaneously. And one of them was, you know, walking right across the church parking lot, which is private property. We see them on private property in multiple situations. But specifically, the, the issue of amplification is not a new one. It is something that has been discussed before. I'm not really clear why we didn't include it in our last revision, but I'm happy to see it included in this revision. But yeah, I think you're right, you know, when you have a group of people walking around in the dark, sometimes standing in the road, sometimes not, I mean, there are various concerns to be addressed there. Anyone else?
Just going back, I think I brought this up once before, we talked about this program. But for someone who, for example, they have got a warning about their grass needs to be cut, and they can't physically do it due to ailments, or, you know, any type of status that might, it might be, and don't have, you know, someone to help them, is there, is there a way to not kind of bury, you know, our residents in tickets if, if they can't physically do, or is there any way that they can, any resources to help someone out in a situation where they are unable to take care of what needs to be taken care of?
Well, in, in terms of the total fine amount, before you get to a citation, it's one hundred dollars. We've tried to make it so that these issues would be fixed within a two-week timeframe. The individual would have to pay ten dollars. Preferably after the warning, they would fix the issue. We, I mean, as it is now, these activities are legal per the ordinances. There's no carve-out for individuals facing a hardship that you've described. It would be something that, that would probably go into the determination when we get to the non-traffic citation, in, in which case, then we have guidance from the court to provide as opposed to necessarily continually giving them citations and wasting the court's time. But, I mean, if, if the fees or fines are too much, that's something we can further cut. But that, I mean, we tried to, we tried to make it reasonable for anyone else that's not violating our ordinances. And as such, I mean, we're looking at our regular mailers with, oh, shoot, certified mail being excess of ten dollars now. So, it's, it's something that trying to get in contact with property owners can get very expensive for the taxpayer.
Do you think it's worthwhile to put in some type of clause that if there are extenuating circumstances, you or whoever it might be could, could make the call to, take a different course of action, or?
I don't necessarily think that would be something we, that the council would need to have in an ordinance. It would be something that we can have code enforcement materials available, community assistance available, those sorts of resources available to provide to individuals once they receive a quality of life warning. And that would be something we could look into, into specifically codifying it. But otherwise, if, if it makes sense, I think that would be something that would be educating the property owner on what's necessary for them to fix the problem, which that's, the courts are going to look to make sure we're doing that as opposed to just giving people tickets.
So, I have a question for Harry on that subject. I know that our law enforcement has the discretion to decide whether they are going to charge somebody or cite somebody or not, given a given situation. Is it possible that our code enforcement officers can be provided the same sort of discretion? Or do we want a more standardized approach to application of policy?
While the solicitor's thinking on that question.
Wow, that was a.
Without, without doing more research on this off the top of my head, I, I think other municipalities essentially deal with Mr. Bell's is concerned by, after X number of attempts, and there's still no remediation to the property maintenance code violation, it will then fall to the municipality to enter those properties, remediate that, and then that property would be leaned for repayment at such time, the next time the property changes hands.
You know, I, I think there's always a, you know, there's discretion involved in, with code enforcement or law enforcement as to whether or not charges are going to be filed, or whether or not a ticket is going to be. be filed or whether or not a ticket is going to be. It's hard to regulate that in terms of putting precise language, but I think that's always something that a, you know, that the code enforcement officer is determining is, you know, is this, is this an appropriate act? Is this going to help in remediating a situation, et cetera? If I understand your question.
So, I, I think what Peter's asking, and feel free to tell me, I don't know what I'm talking about here, is let's, you know, hypothetical, somebody calls in and says, "Well, I got a citation that says I have to shovel my sidewalk in 12 hours. I am an elderly person. I use a mobility device. I do not have somebody who can do this for me today. And also, I don't have the financial means to pay a service." So, are we going to then pile onto that person with more fines or penalties or liens, right? Or does, you know, does the code enforcement have the discretion through talking with this person to say, "I understand the situation you're in. I'm not going to, you know, give you a ticket, but we do have, you know, you need to try to come up with a solution moving forward." You know, if they can't, you know, pay a kid $50 to shovel the sidewalk, they used to be five, it's like 50 now, you know, can they afford a $100 ticket over the course of two weeks?
And, and I think it's important that we always remember that what we're trying to achieve is code compliance. So, I think that, I mean, I look at it as this is just providing some additional tools, if you will.
Am I fairly representing what you were getting at there?
Yeah. Don't want to, you know, kick a horse when it's down.
Right.
Sure. Want to have some humanity and I think that that's, we can certainly do that.
I, I certainly believe that you can.
So, based on the other stuff that's highlighted here, are there any other direct concerns? The question Mr. Whitmore has asked us is, do we think he's moving in the right direction here with his staff? Are there other things you would like to see involved here or do you, would you like to see what the finished work product looks like?
I don't have any concerns. I think it looks good. Thank you for organizing it. It definitely, for me, makes more sense. You said letters would be going out to both the landlords and tenants of rental properties? How then do we determine who is responsible based on their contracts, since their contracts may vary from tenant to tenant or leasing to leasing?
So, Harry can correct me if I'm wrong at this, but my understanding would be that they're all responsible from our perspective.
Gotcha.
Correct. They can allocate by a lease agreement, you know, you know, who's going to be responsible for what, but ultimately from the borough's perspective. And I think oftentimes, you know, rather than, I mean, it's, it's, we've had it, I mean, it's really the, ultimately, it's the property owner who's going to be responsible. And we've had matters go to district court where, you know, a defense has been, you know, "Well, I put it in my lease that my tenant was going to do that." That's not a good defense in, in that regard. I mean, the reality is, is that you had a duty and that duty was not done and you can't necessarily use as a defense that you've, that you've contracted that duty away.
Gotcha.
Okay. So, would we be sending a letter to every property owner or are we sending it just to properties with rental agreements that we are aware of through inspection and, you know, other registration means? And then, should the violation occur in a rental situation, are we sending the citation or the violation ticket to both the tenant and the landlord? I mean, are we duplicating our effort there? Or does it go specifically to the tenant and then the tenant has to have the, you know, uncomfortable conversation with the landlord? What would be the approach there?
As designed, it would be, we would be providing, my understanding is that we would be providing ticketing to property owner, to the property owner, tenant, and providing, potentially providing notice to the property management firm. I don't believe the property management firm is specifically called out in this draft. That's something, once again, to get, it's to get compliance. Yeah.
So, for example, we have a lot of rental properties here in town where the owner is out of state. They may or may not use a local management company for maintenance as much as we would like them to. And the tenant is, is in-state and is accessible to us. So, do we mail the first violation ticket, second violation ticket to the owner in Massachusetts and we give it to the tenant? I guess is my direct question. Or are we, are we specifically putting the responsibility on one or the other party?
Let me interject. I know other, it's really however you want to design it. So, I know in other municipalities, a violation would go to both the property owner and the tenant. However, the responsibility for mediation always falls to the property owner, to the extent that over X number of violations, there are rental licenses revoked.
Got it.
I would, I'd like to jump in there. I would reiterate that right now, that none of this is, none of this is to generate income for the borough. It is really about educating our property owners and tenants.
Absolutely.
And I believe that it absolutely should always be sent to the, both the property owner, the property management and the tenant, especially this next year or two as we roll this out, because we've had issues. We have great code enforcement, but a lot of code enforcement staff, but a lot of our property owners and tenants just don't realize. And I think educating our, educating them is the best solution. So, I would, I would be in favor of sending it to all of them.
And if we do send out a communication to property owners and tenants alike, we need to make sure it's in multiple languages as well.
And, and agreed. And making sure that all of, if it, if it doesn't already, I think Mr. Whitmore said it the last time we discussed this, that it would, that any, that all of those tickets and notices, et cetera, have the contact information to your office or, and/or code enforcement. Direct line. Thank you.
Okay. Any other thoughts?
Yeah. I'm going to throw a really nuanced situation at you, but I'm thinking about the multiple property owners who have duplexes in the borough and one side of the duplex, well-maintained, property looks great, sidewalk's clear, the other half is not well-maintained. And so, in thinking, thinking about, you know, letters going out, being sure to, you know, not punish unfairly the property, the tenants who are in those duplexes, those apartments, those spaces who are doing the right thing. I would, I would not want to receive a letter myself saying, "Hey, the sidewalk hasn't been cleared," or "You're a nuisance," or "You have a barking dog," and I don't, I don't have a dog, I have a cat, or something. So, that's, that's all. I'm just thinking of the many duplexes where I see quite a difference in the, in the tenants and the way they perhaps live or in the way they maintain the property.
One thing that's unique about the borough of Gettysburg is there are a number of duplexes. Traditional duplex would have been one property that has been subdivided.
Right.
Which, that's strange because then you do end up with half a house that could be deteriorating.
Mm-hmm. Yep.
It's something we're aware of tenants with our rental registration program. We, we're, like, once again, we're trying to get to compliance.
Yeah.
So, making sure that we're sending costly mailings, notification out, we're going to be cognizant of who we're sending it to. Additionally, though, we're also, I mean, if, if we're able to get in contact with someone with the property during the warning process, that's when we really have the best opportunity to mitigate everything and correct the violation before it even becomes a real problem.
Yeah. Thank you.
So, as much as I appreciate your expertise in these fields and I do appreciate also Mr. Bell's line of questioning, trying to inject a sense of compassion into, you know, what we are attempting to do here, I'd also like to hear if I can from Mr. Griffune, who's with us here. If you don't mind, I would like to hear, is there something, I'm sure you've seen this work product, is there anything in here that you think is untenable, unachievable? Are there other things you would like to see, other avenues of approach that you think would be more effective?
Well, I would just like the, to understand how I perceive compliance to answer some of your questions. Compliance for me doesn't mean that the next day things are taken care of.
Right.
Compliance, a lot of the time for me, is someone has been a tenant or a property owner and they give me a call and they say, you know, "Our lawnmower is broken, you know? We're going to get it fixed. Things are happening." And I would say, "Okay, I understand. I'm going to document that we had this conversation. What's a good time for you or a good length of time to be able to resolve the issue?" And whatever the answer may be, whether it's a week or 14 days, whatever they suggest is usually a lot more stricter than, than what I would probably propose. So, and to answer your compliance question, that, that's going to be me personally, not to say there would be a future where the code compliance does things differently, but that's how I would define compliance. As far as the, this idea I have read through, I think it's all really well-done and enforceable. But I would add a lot of common sense to these questions. If someone calls to me, an older lady that, that's having trouble, I would help with that situation before I would write a violation. And, and I would be willing to give an extra effort because that's actually rare. A lot of the time, in my experience here, I've not had an incident where someone can't physically do it. And if that would come along, I would be more, more apt to, to call Robbie and see if I could borrow a shovel to go and help them. So, so that's kind of how I perceive this as a resource, but I'm going to still do what I do. I still send letters to tenants. I send letters to owners. That's part of my process already. Notification is key and I'm already doing those things, but there are situations where this would be a better resource to have a quick resolve. But that's kind of where I see my job or my role in this. And if you had any questions, otherwise, that's kind of how I feel about it.
Thank you.
No, that's very helpful. Thank you. I, I can't think of a, a better expression of our desired intent here to say that you would be more inclined to help that person than to cite them. Thank you for that. All right. Any other discussion? All right. So, it sounds like what I'm hearing is I think you're moving in the right direction. I appreciate your department's hard work on this. Looking forward to seeing the final product. All right. Thank you. And thank you, Pete. All right. So, we're going to talk now a little about some parking stuff. Chapter 15, Parking Amendments, The Process and Authorization for Ticket Dismissal and/or Voids.
Ms. Thistle is going to take us through most of this next discussion point. I'll just preface this in that obviously this is everyone's favorite chapter. I think we visit it every year and amend it or tweak it in some way. And as we were looking at this recently, we, we came to the realization that some of it needs to be updated again, only because it's been piecemeal over the years. And what we have started to do with the solicitor is literally go word by word, line by line of this very voluminous chapter, and we're finding some very interesting things. So, with that, Ms. Thistle, we're literally just going to go through the first three parts. This was included in your packet, so if you can't see the screen, you can certainly open it up on your laptops and, and follow along. The document is track changes word document, so we can actually keep track of what's going on. Becca.
Okay. So, this whole chapter is motor vehicles and traffic, not just parking. And as Charles had said, we visited a few times. So, in the beginning, like, I just looked at the parking things and I never started from the very beginning. I was just looking at the parking. So, now, starting from the very beginning, that's, like you said, we found a lot of different things that hadn't, had been missed over the years. So, in the 15-101, the definitions, the holidays, there had been some added since then, some were missed, and they are listed there. Do you need me to read through them or?
No.
Okay.
No, I mean, if you want to go into that detail, obviously, they're in red, the ones that we're missing. So, we're adding those. So, these are now the holidays that are free parking for the borough. The council previously made a policy decision that the actual date of the holiday is the date of free parking, only because we enforce parking seven days a week. So, there will always be a day, a holiday that falls on a Sunday, for example. So, that's, that's the actual free day, for example, so.
And these 12 holidays are all listed on every single meter?
Currently.
Question. It says New Year's Day, so that's.
That's not New Year's Eve.
January 1st.
Yes.
That's correct.
And it says Christmas, but it doesn't say eve or day.
Correct.
Are you opening yourself up for?
Okay. It is Christmas Day.
I'm just.
And it does say it in 13 there. Charles, it looks like on the changes on the, on the right here, I am showing Christmas Day. It looks like it was just probably missed on that.
I might be looking at, I'm looking at what's in our folder.
It's, it looks like it's on the track changes on the right, but didn't make it into the.
Okay.
Everyone, every, yeah, is day, so that would just make it consistent with the right.
We still know there will be confusion, but at least we can spell it out.
Yes. And it does, I believe on the meters, I will double-check, but it does say Christmas Day on the meters.
Okay. Moving on.
15-104, this is adding that the mayor and in his or her absence or incapacity, and I believe this is, Harry, is that how it is stated in the code of, the borough code as well?
Yes.
And that's what we had just matched the language.
That's why we, that's why we matched the language, consistent with the language of essentially our authorizing legislation, if you will.
And that is, "The borough manager and the chief of police shall have the following powers to regulate traffic and parking temporarily in time of emergency." And then in B, "In the case of an emergency or to facilitate public works or in the conduct of parades, processions or public events to restrict or prohibit traffic and/or parking in limited areas for periods of not more than 72 hours." And that was Don Mainley for the 72 hours. Was it 48 before, Charles?
It was, but we have festivals that are now longer than two days.
Right.
Good on that one. The next one I have is 15-106, is the authority of sworn officers.
Right.
That previously said police, but this does say that the officer, the police officers of the borough are hereby given authority to direct traffic on the highways of the borough and intersections thereof. So, anybody that is a sworn officer can do, can do that as well, not just the police.
Okay. So, I'm not seeing that changed there.
Right.
I see it in the title, but not in the actual policy.
Not in the title.
Needs to be, yeah.
Okay.
And then, part two is traffic regulations. That is 15-201. So this was amended to reference the language of Title 75. So it's motor vehicles not to be driven on sidewalks. Yes.
Yeah, I know, kind of obvious. But that's where we are. What's that?
15-202, speed limits established. The following speed limits are hereby established. A speed limit of 25 miles per hour is hereby established upon all streets and alleys in the borough, except upon such state highways where a different speed limit shall be established by the authority of the State Department of Transportation with official signs giving notice of such speed limits. LaFever Street, 15 miles an hour between Baltimore and East Confederate Avenue in locations where a laser speed limit shall be required under the law. And then, "Any person who shall operate a vehicle at a speed in excess of that established, therefore, upon any highway or portion thereof specified in the section, shall upon conviction thereof be sentenced to pay a fine of $35. And for exceeding maximum speed limit for more than five miles per hour, shall pay an additional fine of $2 per hour, or $2 for each mile per hour in excess of five miles per hour." So I believe, Charles, this was... Oh, somebody was asking if we could reduce speed limit in alleys, correct?
Yes. Robbie, what is, what is the speed limit in an alley now? Is it 25 or is it 15? Do you remember?
Good question. We don't have anything posted in that.
Is that set by us or is that set in Title 75?
I think it's set in Title 75, so.
Yeah.
Let's find out.
Yeah. No, it is set in Title 75.
The issue of speed comes up, obviously, in any number of different forums. It came up just last week, actually, when we were talking about the gateway connectivity design. A question I asked one of our experts, can we actually reduce the speed limit from 25 on Baltimore Street to, say, 15? The answer to that was a yes and a no.
Cool.
Essentially. It's easiest to do around a school zone.
Right.
And then I asked the question, you know, what's the, what's the distance in each direction of that school zone? Because if you do something like 1,000 feet, that's pretty much the length of Baltimore Street. There's questions there. So a yes and a no. But there are traffic warrants. Interestingly enough, as it relates to a school zone, the warrant to petition to reduce a speed limit is if you have one student walking to school. We meet that threshold times several hundred every day, so. Interesting. So we're going to look into that a little bit more.
And then in a lot of these, the fines, they were, some of them had not been adjusted since 1980.
Yep.
So they do not match Title 75. Okay. So then, 15-204. Right there, there's another fine, as I said. A lot of these are just updating the fines as, just to match them to Title 75.
All right. Just to back up for a second, I'm not finding anything in Title 75 about alleys having different rules for speed. I think this would be a great question for Chief Glenny. He knows Title 75 pretty damn well. Would you mind asking him if he has a specific knowledge of whether an alley could have a different speed than the general surface road? Thank you. Sorry to interrupt.
Okay. So then, 15-205, same thing. The fine amount is there. 15-206 is stop intersections. And I believe, I don't know if you want me to read through all this, but it does, we, we, it does look like Robbie was going to be reviewing that for accuracy to make sure that those were all... Okay.
So everything, everything there is correct? Okay.
Great.
Go back to traffic signals in certain... I don't see...
Oh, I didn't have anything.
The four intersections, the four intersections that were added in 2010. The West Middle and Franklin Street. Franklin Street and Chambers Third Street. Water Street and Carlisle. And Hanover and Sixth.
Can you send those to me in an email?
Yeah, and if you take a look at it, this indicates that it's not, it does not include any modifications or amendments that would have occurred in 2010, so that...
Right.
It looks like this section was last updated in 1988.
Yeah. So I don't know if that was something that was missed in, by the codification service. Because I think we provide all of the ordinances to them, and they weave those into the...
Great. Good catch. Thank you.
And Rob, 205, Robbie, I didn't, that was okay. Do you recall? Okay. And then 15-206, at the, at the number three at the bottom was the fine as well. 15-207 is the fine. 15-208, through streets established. Robbie, do you know if there was, those were correct?
Yes, those are correct.
I'm guessing you don't want me to read all those through streets. You're fine. Okay. The fine on that one is the same as well. 15-209, one-way streets.
And they're correct.
They're correct. And the fine is on there. 15-210 is the traffic to keep right at certain structures and barriers, and that's the fine. 15-11 is U-turns prohibited on certain streets, and that is the fine.
But does that not list any streets?
There's no streets currently listed there, correct. It's just reserved section.
So U-turns are permissible under vehicle code. The question is, do we want to make it not permissible? So currently, we have, we have no prohibitions on a U-turn.
No, I'm comfortable with that.
15-212, gross weight limits established. It is just the fine there.
Okay.
15-213, trucks prohibited on certain streets. Leave review on that one, Robbie. And the fine is on the bottom of that one. 15-214, trucks to travel in low gear is the fine on that one. That one was also reserved. There's nothing there. And 215 as well.
So under 213, the truck travel on certain streets. So, I mean, is this something we can enforce? I mean, I don't know that we do, right? I'm just, you know, speaking of my own personal experience here, living on the corner of Springs and Reynolds, I can tell you that Dollar General trucks and other trucks take that corner all day, every day, with no enforcement. But further, Springs, you know, it's in its entire length. We do have businesses on the end of Springs that absolutely have to have truck access.
That one is beyond me. I'm not sure.
Okay.
That, I believe, would probably be the chief as well.
So it looks like none of these are part of the state highway system, correct?
Sure.
Right. So this is prohibitions on our local roads. And if Mr. Moon is correct, which I am certain he is, this should then probably be removed. Springs should be removed from this list. If they absolutely require...
I mean, there are signs, I mean, there are signs that say trucks are not allowed, but we don't really have an enforcement mechanism, right? But then also, trucks need to be able to access those businesses. So, I mean, I don't know that all of Springs should be removed, but certainly it can be, it can be re-cajiggered a little bit. But I guess I'm just curious, you know, is this something that we even, anywhere in here, how would enforcement be instigated? Is it complaint-driven? I mean, what, what do we do with this?
What's trucks defined at? Is that a certain length or trailer?
Vehicle designed, used, or maintained primarily for the transportation of property, freight, or merchandise upon any of the following streets. So that would be deliveries.
All right. Mayor, would you have the chief look at 15-213 as well? And offer maybe some thoughts as to, is this enforceable? Are there changes that he would recommend being made there or not? Please and thank you. Great. All right. Thank you for that. We can move on.
There's a fine there. And then 15-217 was play streets. And like I said, if you look at this one, this one was 1985. So I think we, I think we, the discussion was, it was, you know, to sled and things like that in the 80s.
The good old days.
Because that's safe.
So just to repeal that section.
Before there were trucks.
Yeah. Obviously, this was written in a simpler time.
A simpler, yeah. Much simpler.
Where will our children play stick and hoop?
So, yeah, so we're just recommending we just repeal that section completely.
Any objections there? All right. Okay. Thank you.
15-218, left turns prohibited. Did you have any?
The only question I had was on York Street, but there's a, there's a left turn lane going westbound on York Street to turn onto Liberty and onto Hanover. There is three axle or more trucks may not make a left-hand turn going westbound onto Hanover, but they can go onto Liberty Street. We have it crossed off here.
Yeah, I think we had discussed this, and this was, this change did not look like it was made before the left turn lane was added. Or af, I mean, the left turn was added after the last change in the ordinance. So that's why that is crossed off, because now there is a left turn lane. And then there's the fine there. And then 15-219, certain turn, turns prohibited. The only change there would be adding west to Racehorse Alley. It had just previously said Racehorse Alley. And the fine on that one as well. 15-220, restrictions on the use of push carts. And I believe we had a note for John to review that one.
You haven't taken a look at this yet?
Well, no.
And then there is the fine there. 15-221 is the left turn lanes. So I believe this one has the York Street at Liberty there. And that was added to this section, but that's what we had said. It wasn't taken out of the other one, so. And the fine amount there. Was there any other left turns, Robbie, that you were, do you know? All right. Part three.
This one was bizarre.
And I think this is, oh, no, there was a couple. 15-301 was, is parking without lights authorized? And...
What?
Yep, that's what we did.
And this was in 1985 as well. So we were trying to figure out what exactly that meant, but it... It's crossed off online.
So the previous language says, "The boundary limits of the borough are hereby established as a zone in which motor vehicles may remain standing without lights." That's in, that's just the parked car. "And all highways within such boundary limits are hereby designated as highways where motor vehicles may remain standing without lights."
What?
So essentially, it says that you can just park anywhere you want and just turn your lights off and you're good. Which makes no sense.
Right.
Anybody want to keep that?
Yeah. Our recommendation is just repeal it.
Okay. That sounds great.
15-303 is angled parking required on portions of certain streets. And this currently says Lincoln Square.
The note changes to 15-302?
Oops, I'm sorry. No. Not, no. Not that I'm seeing. Did you have something in 302, Charles?
Yeah, I, there's notes that I have in the margins over here.
Oh, it's not on my copy.
So in 15-302.1, I made a note, "Insert language that clarifies the intent where any metered space should be paid during enforcement hours regardless of loading and unloading activities." Becca, there was a specific case where we ran across this lately. Would you like to opine on that?
So, yeah, the, and I believe the woman came in and talked to the mayor as well. And she had parked, and she didn't have four ways on. It was just a regular car loading. And it had, the, she cited the bylaws that said the reasonable amount of time can be, you could read, load and unload for a reasonable amount of time. Her reasonable amount of time was half an hour. So, you know, that, that needed to either be a set time, I believe, or you just need to pay for the parking because you're parked. Was that the only note?
And then on point two, on the same section, I have a note, "Insert language that clarifies the intent where any metered space should be paid during enforcement hours regardless of loading and unloading." So similar to point one. Yeah, it's, again, it's, you know, what's reasonable to you is not necessarily reasonable to us, you know, that kind of thing, how you define that word.
But reasonable is a legal standard that is recognized, so.
How loose a standard it is.
So it's what reasonable means to us.
And we should define that better, yeah.
Well, I mean, and defining it better doesn't really help us, right? Because we've already established that we don't really have a means of notating how long somebody has not been in a space, right? Like, you know, just ran out two minutes ago. Well, we don't know that.
Right.
So if we say it's reasonable to be there for 15 minutes, then they would just have to say, "I was only there for 14 minutes," and we don't have a leg to stand on. So I think it's, if you're at a metered space, you pay the meter.
You pay the meter, yeah.
Yeah. All right, 15-303.
Sorry, I wanted to get that up and running, because in case there's another one that I didn't have the notes on. Is the angled parking required on portions of certain streets? That is the square, the entire square there. And then Charles has a note there that, it says on all streets or portions thereof where angled parking is now or shall hereafter be authorized. All vehicles parked thereon shall be parked with the front of their, their, nearest to the curb. So no backing in in the square.
Is that angled parking, or is that perpendicular parking? Or am I asking a stupid question? We should just move on.
It is that, that would be angled.
I think technically it's angled, however, this came up in our discussions again last week when we were talking about the connectivity, that if we did not have Lincoln Square today, that current configuration would not be authorized by PennDOT.
Right. All right. Let's move on.
Let's skip over 15-305 for a second, because unless you were able to get that, but you were out, yes, last week. What's that?
No, I haven't had time, yeah, I was out all last week.
Yeah, that's a substantial piece, too, so we can revisit that. Yeah, that's like four pages.
My finger, my finger's getting tired.
Yeah.
All right, here we go.
So just out of curiosity, we do have either items on tonight's agenda. Are we going to be reviewing 80 pages of this tonight?
No, no, we're just up to through part three. We're almost done part three.
Thank you.
I think we ended pretty close to here.
What's that?
We ended pretty close to here, I think, did we not? I'm just trying to get to where the-- Because I don't have any more notes, Charles, on mine.
I have a note on this one. Yeah, on transit. Add definition of public transit service. And the definition is at the very beginning of this chapter. We need to button up the definition there, and Solicitor and I were talking about that.
Yeah, there's a lot of potential application of loose interpretation there if we don't spell it out.
Yep. Here's the next one we are recommending to repeal, 15-306.2. Previously, it said it shall be unlawful for any person to park a vehicle or trailer or to allow the same to remain parked at any time between the hours of 10:00 a.m. and 3:00 p.m. prevailing time on the east side of Third Street in the borough of Gettysburg between Zerfing Alley and a .50 feet to the north thereof on Wednesdays and Fridays.
That is so specific.
So clearly, this, this section was, and I don't know when or why or how, but it was written for a person.
Yes.
And we cannot be in that boat any longer. So let's repeal it.
It's the, damn it, Roger stipulation in the original. Wow.
Yeah, right? Think? What is this? Oh. Do we want to give a break here? Because this is a fairly lengthy discussion on dismissal of tickets. This is the next section here.
Yeah, let's move on to the rest of the agenda items for the night. I do want to say, before we move on, though, this is, you know, like so many of these reviews we do, these are massive undertakings. At one point a couple of years ago, Mrs. Butterfield suggested that perhaps every year we should just pick three or four ordinances and have them go through departmental review just to contemporize them for just these sorts of things. So perhaps that is a a practice we need to adopt more regularly. And I do want to say thank you to Becca and to Robbie and to Charles for all working on this together. Thank you for your cooperation on this. It's a big undertaking. We appreciate your efforts on this.
Okay. We'll pick this up next month, and then we'll have a little bit more to add to.
Great. All right. No, that's excellent work, all of you, thank you. All right, so we're going to move on to new business here. Chapter 15, parking amendments. Oh, good, let's move on to chapter 15.
This is under the new business section, because while it still is part of chapter 15, these specific topics are new discussions.
We're going to cover this pesky trailer parking on Third Street on alternate Wednesdays after bingo. No, our first topic of discussion is RPP on Hillcrest Avenue. Becca, give us some background there.
I, two different residents had called me and said they were having problems parking on Hillcrest ever since the school implemented their paid parking in the school lot, because then all those people were trying to move to free places so they didn't have to pay. And then that was affecting the residents on Hillcrest, so they cannot park. They'll come home at night and they have, from work, and they have no parking and have nowhere else to park. Some of them do not have rear parking. The street parking is their only option. So this happened on Fourth Street, maybe three years ago, I believe, if some of you recall. And they did petition that to be a RPP, and that was approved. And that is currently an RPP, and it works very well there.
I also heard from several residents from Hillcrest as well, who reached out to me with this complaint. And it is timed with the, you know, the implementation by the school district to charge for parking. And so it's a very highly dense neighborhood, right near Mr. G's up on the hill. And it has really created some issues for them, so.
I've heard from people who live on Hillcrest, that they can't park there anymore.
Okay.
I don't have a count of number of spaces, Robbie. Do you think you have a guesstimate? I don't even have a guesstimate, or the number of houses, but it's not much. I mean, I would say not even, there's not more than spaces for two per house, two parking spaces, so.
It looks like there's 11 homes total.
Okay.
Twenty, maybe 25 spots.
So if each person had two, you know, two vehicles.
Okay, anybody have any objection to this being RPP?
Not at all.
And you're confident this would alleviate the issues these residents are having?
I am. This, as I said, this has worked well on Fourth Street. It works on many other streets around the college. You know, sometimes it, it's something that we check, and it's not every day that they get checked, but it's random or complaint-driven as well. We appreciate, they have complaints, actually, because then we know what's, it's happening more. And it does happen that, you know, we'll ticket, you know, a couple of days in a row or two weeks in a row, and then everybody will be good for six months, and then it'll start again, so. But I think it would work very well there.
Yeah, the difficult thing here is that the folks who are probably utilizing this parking are also residents of that neighborhood. And while they used to enjoy free neighborhood parking in the school parking lot, now they cannot. And so they're still just trying to find a place to put their car. And sadly, they live, they may or may not live in places where parking is not provided, but I think that's probably a wise solution there. No opposition?
No opposition. I have a question, though. Becca, or any of us, have we heard from residents about the, I guess it's the Battlefield Road coming down from Hillcrest? That's adjacent to the school district field? Because that's where I see a lot of parking. And I can imagine, if you can't park in front of your house, oh, yeah. I mean, I take that road, LaFever Street, frequently to get to 30, to bypass the downtown traffic. And I saw several cars dropping people off along LaFever. Just parked right there around the corner, couldn't see them. It's drop-off for ice cream, it's drop-off for buses. And then you had cars parked all along the road, and I couldn't even imagine living up there and trying to find a space, given the lack of spaces that there are.
Yeah, so actually, we were alerted to, they were also parking on Locust. As soon as--
Yes.
The no par-, the parking, the school started parking, charging for parking. They started parking on Locust and on that little section of the street that is the borough there by the baseball fields, I believe.
Yes.
And then in looking, the signs probably had been removed, the no parking signs had been removed when sidewalks were put in or construction and things like that. And Public Works did put the signs back up then, when we realized that they were not there any longer. So those are posted, no parking, and they are in the ordinance as no parking at any time on Locust and Wainwright, thank you.
Yeah. I'm just curious if you've heard anything about that. Thank you.
All right, great. All right, thank you. So the next one--
Is a bit of a mystery. So I had 304 Baltimore Street on my to-do list for a while. I keep a log of things that I need to put on agendas and things. So I had a note to put this on the April work session agenda. But I don't recall why. And talking with a couple of people, we have a theory. And so John Whitmore pulls up the street view of 304 Baltimore Street. It's kind of like a lone parking spot in the middle of a very lengthy piece of road that has no other parking spots on it. While, oh, you got disconnected on the Wi-Fi or something. There you go, okay. So if you look at the street view-- I'm sorry. You'll see there's a crosswalk there. My working theory is that if you have a vehicle parked in that space, someone traveling on Baltimore Street headed north potentially could not see a pedestrian trying to enter the crosswalk. Robbie, would you agree with that assessment as Public Works Director?
Yes, and actually, when we were doing some work out there on--
Sorry, can you pass the mic over, Becca?
Oh, I'm sorry.
When we were doing some work on Wade Avenue before that crosswalk, it's on, before that crosswalk came in to play, it used to be two lines going across the street before the piano keys came up there. We actually had a, actually had a student get hit there.
I remember.
Because we were, we were just up there by Wade Avenue, and we heard the commotion, and we came down to help assist the student before emergency services got there. So it's possible that that person did not see the person, that there was a car parked there, and they just came out and didn't have time to stop.
Yeah, it's kind of hard to see here. We were looking at this street view just before the meeting. So this one lone meter here at 304 is by itself, and it's hard to see, but there's nothing, no other metered spaces until you get north of the crosswalk. There's a fire hydrant, you have to get beyond that fire hydrant before you start getting into metered spaces again. And if we turn the view to the south, it's very similar. It is sort of hemmed in with, by a driveway, and then a bus stop. And, you know, still probably another 40 to 50 feet south before we get to another metered space, like several parcel, you know, maybe a parcel or two down the street. So it is this, like, lone island parking meter at a T intersection with a crosswalk, with a lot of kids crossing here with, sometimes with a crossing guard and sometimes without, so. Guessing that this might be the reason we're talking about this. It would be a good justification to get rid of it.
It actually is, and I did just find it. And I'm not sure, Charles, why you thought it had been on there a while, but it looks like I received the email complaint on April 16th. And I did forward it to Charles, and it specifically calls out 304 Baltimore Street. And I don't know if this person's a crossing guard, or they cross their child every day, but that is exactly what it was.
Okay. Does anybody have opposition to eliminating that meter?
No, but I have a question.
Yeah.
Because I always have questions. What's the process of doing that? Obviously, we have to vote on that at a business meeting. But removing the meter is one thing. Do we also, how do you get rid of the parking lines?
Paint over them.
Yeah, well, we would have to rewrite the ordinance, which we're currently doing. So we'll just roll this right into all the other chapter 15 updates, yep.
Yeah. Yeah, I say remove it.
Okay. Any other thoughts? Good plan? Okay. Great. All right, and then the last thing has to do with meter enforcement hours on York Street. This is specifically the south side of York Street between Stratton and Liberty. This issue was brought to our attention by somebody who works at CARES, works with a very vulnerable population. This person themselves has some physical disabilities and has trouble, first, feeding the meter with great frequency, and then, second, with getting out to move her car with great frequency, especially as she is occupied with caring for people who need a lot of attention. This person is not asking for special considerations. You know, she's not looking for free parking or anything like that. She's just not wanting to move her car three to four times during her workday. So I went over to see her to have her kind of explain the situation to me. She has received and paid several tickets in this one spot. And it's an interesting and weird block. So the half of the block closest to St. James, the meters are three hours. And then the half of the block furthest from St. James, the meters are 12 hours. And the justification we've heard for the different amounts of time on meters like this has to do with the prevalence of parking as it relates to commercial spaces. We don't want people parking for 12 hours in front of a commercial space. Because, you know, we want businesses to be able to turn over a fair number of customers throughout the day. So interestingly, this particular block, on the north side of the street, it is purely residential. There's no commercial interests there. On the south side of the street, the three-hour meters are in front of residential properties, and the 12-hour meters are in front of the commercial spaces. So it's actually backwards on that block. So the request that was made was, on this block, the southern side of York Street, between Stratton and Liberty, to turn all of those meters into 12-hour meters instead of three-hour meters. I spent about an hour, you know, looking at it, and this was 1:00 in the afternoon on a Thursday. Hers was the only car parked on the entire block. And in the six weeks since, she and I talked about this. I've gone back several times. six weeks since, uh, she and I talked about this, I've gone back several times and consistently, hers is the only car parked on this entire block. This is not a block with high demand metered spaces. It's not that, you know, these spaces need to turn over frequently to meet the demand of the, um, shopper. Uh, I then have decided to, you know, walk by even on the weekends when we would tend to have more visitors here. And granted, we're still early in the year, but I still have yet to see anybody but her parked on this block. So, um, I asked Becca for her input, some of the history on this. Is there a good reason why we do this on these, these radial blocks? You know, we have strong reasoning for why we set prices as we do in proximity to the square. But this seems like a place where there, there is an issue. It is impacting negatively somebody who is trying to do good work for our community. And, uh, the change would actually create some, um, some comfort and keeping it the same achieves none of our goals for how we manage parking. Anybody have any opposition to changing this block to twelve hours?
Can I just make a quick comment?
Please.
So, uh, I, I have tried to find out a little why that block was like that and nobody seems to have a good answer. Um, a couple, I think they referred me back to Flo Ford and they wanted to change it when Flo Ford was here. And it was not, um, I'm guessing, they are all guessing because all the other second blocks are all short-term streets. So, um, you know, that, that was the dynamics that they decided to make it half and half and didn't want to make the closer ones towards the first block there, you know, the twelve hour. Um, uh, President Moon, I would agree most of the time, those are not used. However, this evening was a rarity. I drove by at six forty-five and there were two buses and four cars parked there. Um, my only fear is if we do make those twelve hours on all of them, that she would completely lose parking because a bus could potentially park there now for twelve hours. And on the opposite side of the street, I know there have also been complaints, um, from residents on that side about buses parking on that side, but, and that would be twelve hours that a bus could park there.
Sure. Um, you know, we run that risk with any metered space though, right? It is public parking. Um, and the discussion I had with this particular person, I, I made it clear, you know, that we can't reserve spaces. We can't create a pri- private space on the street regardless of whether somebody has a disability or not. Uh, even if we were to turn it into a disabled parking space, the parking fees would still apply, the time limits would still apply, the public utility of that space would still apply. Um, and she, she seemed understanding of all of that. But you're right, that risk is there. Um, you know, hopefully, you know, if people working with CARES are getting to work by eight or nine in the morning, they might beat the buses there, but I, you know, you never know. There could always be a bad day, right?
Yeah, or if you go out to lunch and have to move your car then and then come back and you have no parking. But I just wanted to make you aware that if that hap, that could happen.
Yeah, no, I, no, thank you. Um, any opposition to this change?
Uh, just a follow-up question on that. Um, I'm pretty familiar with that area too, since I live there and that's very close to the parking garage, um, for any businesses. Um, I understand President Moon's, um, thoughts on that for sure. I also understand Becca's thoughts on that for sure. I do have a question about, you mentioned about the second blocks from the square. They're, all of the other second blocks from the square are short-term three-hour parking? Even the second block of Carlisle?
Yes, the whole way down to water.
For who? If it's, isn't it intended for businesses? The, the quick changeover, the three-hour parking and move along?
Yes.
So on the second block of Carlisle Street, it's.
All the way down to water.
For.
It's three hours.
Two businesses there?
Um, there's a number of businesses.
All right. The second block of Carlisle Street. Okay.
Yeah.
Correct.
Um, so.
And the same with Chambersburg as well.
I understand Chambersburg, Baltimore.
Are you proposing something grander here in terms of an addition?
I'm just confused as to why it's on the second block of Carlisle Street. I agree that, 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 that it could be on the second block of York Street. I would be in favor probably of the longer term. I, I don't see buses sitting there for that long. I will say that. The buses that park there are there for a certain business. They leave when, they leave within two hours. So, um, yeah, I would not be opposed to twelve hour parking in the second block of York Street.
Everybody agree with that? Okay, great. All right, thank you all. Um, that's going to take us to our second public comment section of the evening. Jill, did you have anything? No? Okay. Richard, were you gonna? Then we will forego the usual announcements. Um, I want to thank everybody for thoughtful dialogue tonight. I want to thank the staff for excellent work on some of these topics. Some of the, um, some of this work can be, uh, a bit of a treasure hunt, trying to find the history and the truth. So thank you, everybody, for your hard work and we are adjourned.